I just want to get that, if y'all will get it, and I'll get that. I'll get that.
South 2013, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, Mount Session. God on both hands, Smiley, Chairman.
And what's gracious from one family? Hold the one, two. As you bless these committees.
The cleat is certified, non-state sub-mercy, through Republic, where the stands, one nation, under God.
Glad for your place for coming out today. We're starting our meeting up by, uh, is there anyone in the public concerned with the construction?
So move to pass, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels.
Second.
Sent by Mr. Yeager. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries, five and no. Time to step. Listen.
Uh, yes, sir. I just asked that you would approve Budget Amendment Number Four. These individual requests have already been approved by the Board, and I just need you to approve the actual budget amendment.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Thank you very much.
Had an employee submit as a resignation last week. I would like to replace that employee now, so I'm requesting the Board approve that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
This is a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. This is a motion by Mr. Mackamore.
Second.
Sent by Mr. Yeager. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries, five and no.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just let the Board know that we finally got our executed, uh, technical grant back from the state, and we're ready to proceed with it. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the industrial park lease agreement that we last discussed at our last meeting, you all had approved our business response in terms of the right of first refusal and the contribution towards the purchase price. Um, we've since had discussions with the actual proposed tenants for the industrial park. Um, they've indicated they may attend today. I don't see them in the audience. Um, I do want to offer their comments back to the Commission as a whole, so you understood, um, what their counter would be, if you will. They have not signed a commercial lease on the property. Uh, when I went back to them with the final resolution of the Commission with regards to the ten percent and the right of first refusal, at the end of this, uh, lease term, um, they had come back and indicated that they would wait to sign the lease. Um, they're requesting a hundred percent of the purchase, uh, a hundred percent of the credit towards the purchase price on the commercial lease, and also not a right of first refusal, but the contractual right to buy the property from the county at the expiration of this lease. So those are the two terms that are still, uh, that you're a part on. Um, and, uh, obviously, there's considerable gap there. So I'd ask for your additional comments or direction, um, that we may be able to go back to these proposed tenants. Anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Okay, they're asking for a hundred percent of it to purchase it back. That does no, that does not lock us into a situation where we have to sell it. Is that correct, or how does that work?
At your last meeting, you all approved the right of first refusal, so there is a contractual right by the tenants who have just, uh, joined us, that they have the ability to buy the property for first in line if the county decides at the end of this lease to sell it. Now, that was the county's response, okay? But right now, and I'll let this, uh, gentleman in the business speak for themselves, but I believe they want the absolute right to buy the property at the end of the lease.
Okay. Played across the board, gentlemen, I'm not for selling that property. I'll work with these boards any way I can. I don't mind the lease, but at the end of the day, I'm not for selling it. So y'all know where I'm at with it.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Uh, I think the key word to this is if, and, uh, my understanding with this side agreement, if the Board elected, wasn't it we had to say that we would give him, uh, a first chance, my way, uh, first refusal, and we would consider compensation? There's nowhere in any of this that we were, it was mandatory that we sell this property. I think that many of us will give that. And that's my understanding, is that to understand?
That, that's been the county's position up to this point, um, and that's correct, Mr. Commissioner. That is absolutely our, been our position up to this point, and they're here today, so just so I don't try to paraphrase their position. If they want to come up to the podium, they're certainly welcome, and they can address you all as to the response or the counter proposal they have for the, uh, industrial park.
Y'all will give us about two hours, Dr. Miss Smiley.
Now, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Billy Tyler, representing TIFCO. The, uh, opportunity to be here, we do appreciate it, and my position here is, is a good friend of theirs. My position here is, I do know the history of this building. Goes back to nineteen ninety-nine, I think that's correct. And Mr. Butler, please correct me of anything I say that may be untrue or, uh, out of line, but let me go back to, I understand what you just said, and we have no problem with what we just said, as far as the building itself. In three years, whether you sell it or not, that's position of the Board. We understand that. But we do need to understand, too, that these gentlemen are putting nearly eighty thousand dollars of their money toward that building, rent, lease, uh, as renters, and also paying the property taxes on that and so forth. They're also making a, uh, I think, a large investment by this building. I don't know how many people have walked through this building in the last two or three months or last month. Has anybody actually?
Uh, yeah.
Carmen has, and I've talked extensively with Carmen on this, a little bit with Warren on this, and mostly with Mr. Butler, simply because of the history and so forth. Mr. Butler knows all the history, from the, uh, the cost of the building being well over three hundred thousand dollars. Is that right, Mr. Butler?
We got a grant for five thirty-six, two fifty, in nineteen ninety-five.
Right. It was insured for a little over three hundred something thousand dollars.
Yes, three eleven.
There is, that's okay. The, the gist of this right here is, is that they're willing to put a next conditional twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars inside the building itself, simply because the building is run down inside. I mean, you know, when something sets up that long, obviously, that's what happens. The, you know, I, I got involved in this because I want to see somebody in the building. How many years that building has it set vacant right now?
It must have been about three years, two or four years.
Right. And you received no money or nothing toward that building, and even paying it off and so forth. And their interest is really and truly that their businesses try to expand, try to grow, try to employ more people, and so really and truly, they're taking a chance by doing what they're doing. And, and, you know, and that's what we want. We want businesses to step forward, take these chances if they possibly can, and this is a good opportunity right now for that industrial park, which has sat vacant for the last three or four years, is to put somebody in it. And they're also willing to put money in it and so forth, and, and to, it's like in a house. A house, you know, if you leave it alone and don't touch it, it'll run down. That building has done the same thing from the inside, not so much the outside, but the inside has. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity that they're looking at trying to expand their business and go as well. The only issue that we, we have, I say we have, is, is Tony and Casey, as far as the owners of the company, is that the ten percent came up at the last board meeting. At the last board meeting, the ten percent came up toward that money going toward the possibility of buying that building in three years. That's a very, very small amount, if you get right down to it. The last agreement was a hundred percent of what Thornton was putting down, and which was, that's, that's the Board, it was a different Board, and I understand that, they understand that. But ten percent is really a very minimum from the standpoint, uh, it's, it's really, it's not even, I said, that's a good jest, because they're putting all the money themselves. They're going to have a hundred thousand dollars in three years on this building, with the money they invested and what they pay you guys and the property taxes. They'll have over a hundred thousand dollars in it. It will go all to the county. Whether you sell the building or don't sell the building, you're going to get that money. That's, that simple. But if you did sell the building, that, you know, looking at ten percent going toward it, that, that's not, that's not really practical from the standpoint. What we'd like to see is you revisit that particular ten percent and look at it again from our side. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman.
The ten percent, that's, that can be negotiated there, if you put out there.
Anyway, that's what we're...
Out of mind, that, that, we always open for negotiations, if, and again, the word is if, if we decide to sell this building.
Well, we, we understand.
That can be renegotiated.
But we need to negotiate the ten percent before they sign into a contract, is what I'm trying to say.
I don't even mind the hundred percent.
Right.
You know, it's like Mr. Mike Daniels says, if we decide to sell.
Exactly.
That's it, right there. I don't have a problem with a hundred percent.
We understand, every, everybody on this Board has a different position on that, and that's fine, we understand that. We just want to say this right here, at the end of the day, at the end of three years, they're going to have a hundred something thousand dollars in that building. You're going to get that money, every bit of it. You know, at the end of three years, they just may have to walk away and say, hey, they didn't want to sell it. We hope, to be honest with you, they hope, they, they hope that their business goes forward and that they can look at you guys and say, we want to buy the building, and that you'll sell the building at a fair market value price. That's what their hopes are. If you don't do it, you just don't do it.
A hundred percent, basically, is an interest-free loan. I'm, I am not in favor of a hundred percent. Um, I, I understand that the initial lease payment was already lowered to account for some of the improvements that would need to be done by the tenant, so I, I think that we can move up from the ten percent, but I am definitely not in favor of a hundred percent.
Mr. Butler, I, I'm sorry, but I cannot remember the agreement with, with Thornton on, on that amount. Was, what was the agreement with, with the Thornton?
I actually have it right here.
You had a, you had an agreement, you had in your agreement, you set the rate, was like three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, at five percent, and the day they started the lease, the five percent interest started, and I think that interest wound up accumulating over a period of time, something shy to a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, something like that, written in the agreement. But it was, uh, we had a set rate at a time plus five percent interest.
Uh, uh, Mr. Treger, do they have a projected employees, number of employees that they're looking to new hire? I know they're in business now.
Okay.
They're growing too.
Well, what they have right now is fourteen employees. They would, uh, hopefully, put on five or six more people as far as that. Uh, you know, the bottom line is, is that, you know, they're making changes in their business, uh, Casey Kelly back here is the new Vice President of the Business and so forth, so they're expanding, they've just got several new contracts, you know, we were talking about it coming up here today and so forth. Uh, they're, they're going to expand, whether they get the building or not.
Okay.
They would love, they're going to expand, but, you know, it would be, here's the bottom line is, guys. The, I basically tried to persuade them to move into this building because I want to help the county, but I want them to grow, and, and that's what I'm looking at, gentlemen. This is economic development here. This is, this is what we've been working on for years, trying to get people employed. We had a man come in the other day, we've got new, we've got twelve employees, I assume, with the ice machine for the last five, six, seven years in the county, that I'm, I'm aware of. You know, this is what we have to work on. So with the big if, you know, that we don't have to sell this building, I'll put a motion on the table that we let them have it for a hundred percent. I don't have a problem with that. I just, my problem is, I just don't want to sell it at the end of the day.
Well, and, and keep in mind that what Mr. Butler just stated, that, um, the, the hundred percent was within interest. I don't know if they're looking to pay interest. Also, I, I don't know how much marketing has gone on with this building. I don't, I, I did drive up and look at the building, I did not enter the building, but I, um, went up and looked at it. It is a considerable amount of space, and it, it may be a building, I mean, the talk is that it's sat empty, but I don't know if there are out there that don't know that it's available. I, I think that we need to be careful not to set a dangerous precedent for, um, other properties that the county controls in the future. And I know there were some, um, requirements from the EDA. One of, one of the EDA's issues were that we did not have an option to purchase, and I don't know what the other requirements are, but I don't believe that we should enter into a side agreement to put the types of terms into the agreement that the EDA would not approve of when they review the lease itself. I'm not certain about the credit towards the purchase, but I know that the EDA was not in favor of an option to purchase.
Okay. I can, I can tell you this, for the past six or seven years, I have personally, and, and a lot of people has worked extremely hard trying to get people employed, trying to get people into that building, not only into that building, throughout the whole county. We have nothing. You know, this is an open door for us to put people to work. We have one snag in the way, the way I see it, is the hundred percent. So, you know...
Got a motion on the table by Mr. Mike Daniels. I have a second.
A second for discussion.
Got a second by Mr. Yeager for second.
I, I think in discussion, you, not only every county, but the state struggles on what do, what do we give for incentives to, uh, attract business to expand and grow? And at the end of the day, uh, I understand, you know, my thought was, foot, if they, if they, if they are in the building for three years and they grow the business, and they're a thriving business, I'm for selling the building. I know that there, there's a difference of opinion on this Board about that, and so I can, I can live with just the, the option of selling the building. Um, and, and I'm, I'm supportive of the, of the monies going towards the purchase of that building for the three years. Uh, I'm ready to get them in there. I've seen that building set, you know, for a pretty good long ti, it was, it was leased for a pretty good long time to, to, uh, to, uh, Mr. Thornton. So, you know, I'm in support of that, uh, and at the end of the day, if we can work those things out with the EDA, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to see business, uh, grow in our community, and I think it's one way to do it.
And I think this is an opportunity, you know, to give these, this company a chance. Let's see what they can do, like Mr. Yeager said, in three years. It may be that we want to sell it to them, you know, but let's, let's give them a chance. Let's don't let this negative block this people from, from being able to be put to work.
Mr. Chairman, the, and, and this is not a fly-by-night company. Uh, most of the people on this Board know this company. They've been here going on fifteen years. Uh, they're going to pay their rent, if they don't pay it, I'll pay it. How's that sound? But anyway, we, we want to, you know, I understand what Mr. Bryant is saying, and you've got a good point as far as that. Uh, I, I don't have any disagreement with that right there, but I know full fact, and I guarantee you, Ward, that's been out there as well, business from, uh, the district up there, trying to get somebody in this building. I know when I sat on that Board, I looked and looked and looked, I'll be very honest with you, I did everything I could. It's just so happened that these people right here live here in Leeburg and so forth, and, and, you know, we've given them an opportunity, I hope, to say that, listen, we want to help you out, as the County Commissioners here, and they're going to help you out, too. They're going to help you pay for that building. That's what they're going to do, and employ some more people. So, you know, based upon that, I mean, all we're here for today is, is this percentage thing on, you know, the, uh, toward that going toward the, you know, the building, the purchase of it, maybe. But, you know, ten percent, and, and, you know, we should have been here and talked about that earlier, and I apologize for that. I should have been here, and we should have went over that, and, cause, uh, the Attorney and, and Don and I, that's something that, you know, if we had went over, maybe we wouldn't even be in this discuss, discussion as far as that. Y'all could have settled this, but, you know, we would appreciate anything that y'all can do.
You know, a sentence, to me, a sentence, determining the sentence is how bad you really need it. And you know, Gulf County right now, we need jobs. So at this time, we got a motion on the floor, and it's Mike Daniels. I got a second by Mr. Yeager. I have any opposed?
Before we vote, I just want to clarify, a lot of terms have been thrown around, option, right of first refusal, and I want to clarify that, um, Commissioner Macklemore, um, would like to forward this motion on a right of first refusal and not an option to purchase.
No, that, that's not my motion.
Well, now, the right of first refusal would be that we do not have to sell, but if we sell, they get to have the first.
That's great. Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that. That's, that's great.
Okay, um, I'm going to vote no, strictly because I'm against the one percent. I think we could find a middle ground.
I just wanted to add, um, some additional, uh, the first eighteen months is twenty-seven thousand, um, and the last eighteen months is thirty-six thousand, so the total lease terms would be sixty-three thousand, so you'd understand, sixty-three thousand dollars would be applied towards the eventual purchase price, if the county exercises the right to sell the property. And just so you know, the EDA lease is a lease with TIFCO or the company, and at the end of that lease, the county's free to do what you all choose to do, and you're outside, you know, the, uh, scope of the EDA, that's when you have that contractual right to do, you know, apply this, exercise your right to sell. So it's a right of first refusal, and you apply that percentage to it.
So we are saying that we, we'll make that decision in three years.
That's cool. Well, yeah, as we approach that thirty-six month, we'll probably want to let the commercial tenant know your intent, and they will engage in either entering the contract for the sale and setting it up, or you'll notify them that you're not, and you can continue your lease and keep on marching down.
I just want the company, the company to know that I'm here to help you.
And, and we appreciate that, and, and the fifty-seven thousand dollars he's talking about with additional, right now, you're not receiving anything, property taxes on that and so forth, they're going to be paying the property taxes on that, plus the money they invest on it, and that's where I came up with a little, roughly a little better than a hundred thousand dollars.
We got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, I got a second by Mr. Yeager, got one opposed by Ms. Bryant, all approved, motion passed, full, full, full in one.
Gentlemen, we appreciate it, we thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let them know that I'll get that right of first refusal in the agreement to them, they can sign it this week, and ideally, they'll sign the lease at the same time. Okay, thank you. Uh, I just wanted a couple of announcements. One, our homestead exemption for seniors ordinance is going to be advertised on March twenty-eighth in the Star, and it will be, uh, public hearings on April ninth, our first Tuesday. You've all heard the first reading of that, uh, ordinance, uh, last meeting, and it will be, uh, advertised. Um, addition, Animal Control Subcommittee, we've set up a date for Thursday, March twenty-eighth, nine AM, offer to the public so that they're aware of the date. As we move forward, we're going to meet again with Rowan and the Subcommittee, and we invite the public to come, and we'll notice that on the courthouse as well, of that date. Um, and that's all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, leave your copy over. We will ask you, there's something, we're going to bring it up for you and app today. Um, uh, Weewell High School making a request to use a hundred bill community center, um, and weigh the fee for that, for the, um, um, yeah, for the Weewell, um, Board's consideration.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, and second by Mr. Mackamore, second by Mr. Yeager, any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, next out, I also gave you a copy, um, of a page from FPC, one of the enterprise programs. Uh, had a good meeting yesterday with, with this group that's into collections, and we're looking at EMS collections, trying to close a gap. Uh, you started the year off with about three hundred and seventy-five pounds of gap between what you collect and what the budget is for front ambulance, and this is one way to collect bad debt, and it's something FPC pushes, it's, uh, uh, they've been doing this for several years now. Uh, these people will pick up the past dues thirty days after the past due, I'm, I'm sorry, sixty days after thirty days past due, um, which is ninety days out, is our EMS consultants, our contractor is collecting money now on, on runs, uh, ample time to collect the money. If they can't collect, these people will go out and try to collect. So, um, I did, Mr. Attorney, Eastern Brett, and met with this group for the hour and a half yesterday, and not you got a vote on it today, but for your consideration, uh, whether you do today or, or in two weeks, um, it, well, maybe if you're willing to collect some of the ambulance bills.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this, this, one of the things that we've tried to do is close that gap of what, what the EMS cost us versus what we collected. This is one, one way to do it, and Association of Counties, you know, is, is, has worked with this group for a long time with different counties. Uh, I'm in favor of this, uh, to collect some of the bad debts.
Actually, I went to the seminar that we had down south, and I think it's a great idea myself, so.
I, I would have, I would have rather had a little bit of time to review this, and I, I know there's different folks that do collections. I would like to ask the Board to table this until the next meeting, and there may be some local folks that, um, have collections, um, services that they would offer, and I would just like to have a little bit of time to consider this particular service.
We have no problem with table.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any issue with tableing this, still.
One clarification. Clarification just for the audience and the people on it, it is strictly based on the percentage. There's no money out, no out-of-county money here, they work to account the percentage.
This requires us to pay a flat rate, eleven dollars and twenty-five cent per bill collected, and, uh...
Eleven twenty-five per bill.
Eleven dollars a quarter.
That's our fee, alright.
So we have about...
People don't have this, and I just want to...
Yeah, we have about twenty-two hundred runs per year. Um, we would not include Medicaid, Medicare, and any of those that's paid.
Medicaid, Medicaid is exempt from this.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we won't, yeah, these people won't be going out to Medicaid, Medicare, but we're probably talking about a thousand runs per year.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Alright.
So, alright, to the Board, I have to be excused, but before I get the excuse, at this time, I was hoping I get to it so I could put my motion on the floor. I want to put Minnie Likely on that Restore Act Committee, motion that we accept, Ms. Minnie Likely, she's a retired teacher from Gulf County, um, school board, uh, she's been active in various, a bunch of different boards, so I think she's a good person that we can look at to put in that place for Mr. Yeager.
Uh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
A second.
Got a second by Ms. Bryant?
Uh, just in discussion, we had a couple that applied for that, but, uh, I understand, I, I've got several people on my, in, in my district on that particular Board, uh, at the end of the day, in the future, if we see a, a need to add to that, uh...
Just one, just one clarification, make sure Mr. Attorney, we're okay with his motion now.
Well, and I understand the Chairman would pass it to Mr. McDaniel, and Mr. McDaniel just, did you pass the gavel, or you suggest a motion? So the motion came from Mr. Ward?
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm passing it to Mr. Mike Daniels.
After the motion?
I'm going to take the motion right now, I'm going to pass it.
If you've passed the gavel, then, Mr. McDaniel, I know you made the motion, but I think Mr. Smiley, if he passes the gavel, then he can introduce the motion, so whichever way you'd like it, come through.
I made the motion.
So you're fixing to leave, okay.
You second?
Fine, make the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion passed, five and no. Alright, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McDaniel, if I can, um, just go back and, with regards to the NCS plus yesterday, two things I wanted to just offer to the Commission with regards to the RFP process, if you all table it for, um, Pasco County did put it out to bid through the floor Association of Counties, so there is a piggyback ability for this County Commission to move forward at that fixed flat rate, um, based on what you acquire from this company. So as you go forward, and I'll be happy, and as will the staff, to discuss that ability that you can pick up off of the RFP, you'll save your advertising costs, and also, in terms of the innovation of the approach and the product that they're offering, in, I wouldn't, I'm not going to deem it as a sole source, but it is a unique product, and I'd encourage each of the Commissioners to look at that, and that way you can, it, it's different than a straight collection practice. Typically, in your collection process or a collect, collection agency that will go out for a percentage, on this, it is, um, a fixed rate, and in terms of their approach and their, it, it's an innovative software and package that they put together, but over the next two weeks, I'd encourage you all to look at the different dynamics of the company, and then also know that Pasco County put it out to RFP, so you'd save that advertising promotion cost, okay?
Alright. Alright, good, oh.
Um, I have a question. Um, how is, are you saying that the approach is different in the way that they collect the funds or attempt to collect the funds?
Yeah, and, and that's why I don't want to sit here, let the vendor make that recommendation or that presentation in terms of their sole source. I wouldn't deem that under your county policy, and you haven't, you don't need to deem it as such, since it's already been RFPed through Pasco. But in terms of their approach and their development of this, uh, product, if you will, in the state of Florida, it is unique in its nature. So, and I can, we can, from what, obviously, we've gone through in their, their process.
Alright, I, I guess maybe I'm just not following you in how it is, other than the fact that it's already been, that Pasco County has already done what we don't have to do, but how, how is it unique in the way that they do their collections?
I mean, like, in that climate on that, this is a flat rate, every, every bill in that's taxed due, they will go after that bill, um, instead of percentage-type collection, where they go and cherry pick the best ones. If, if I had to collect, um, if it's a hundred bad bills, and I go through and look at everybody's credit scores, I would only go after those with a high credit score, 'cause I know you're gonna pay your bill. I wouldn't waste my time and money and energy on those.
So, it's strictly the flat fee process that is unique? Not necessarily the, the approach and how they contact the debtor to collect the debt?
It's flat fee on everyone, if not percentage.
Okay.
It, it, let me be sure I understand it too. So, it's a flat fee for everyone that they go after, not necessarily everyone that they collect, but everyone that they go after?
Everyone they go after.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Bryant, did you want to table, motion to table it, or do you want to move forward?
I, I would like to table this. I'll, I'll make the motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Set table. We have a second from Commissioner Jaeger. Further discussion? Motion passed, four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question right now.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Yeah? Okay, we'll move right on into Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner McLamore.
Wow, I, 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 I'm good too. I, I will say there's some legislative issues that we're working on, uh, Medicaid being one of them, an issue with property appraisal being one of them, I'll try to keep you abreast as those things move forward. Small can of coal in the back. That's it, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Good, I have one, just minor thing I want to bring before the board, and, uh, we'll take no action, but, uh, Sheriff and I spent Friday evening and the better part of the night at a serious accident up on three eighty-six and Highway seventy-one, and as we speak, Public Works, we have people up there at this moment working on that, and, uh, we also have a, all into DOT to see if possibly putting a flashing light at the intersection of, uh, three eighty-six, seventy-one. It's a very dangerous intersection, it's, uh, obviously, the stop sign is a hundred feet before you get to the intersection, so everybody runs a stop sign, because, uh, you don't stop when you get up here. But we've got to address that, and we've got a parking issue there with the people parking on public property, county property, and state driveway, and, uh, we've got to address that. But that's all I have. I just want to let, let the board and let Sheriff know we are working on it. Alright, let's go to the public. Does anyone in the public have any, if you'd like to come before the board today with any One from the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Well, yes, one of them.
For the board's consideration, we have another board meeting in two weeks, um, looking at what Bay County had done on delinquent property taxes, where the people have, Bay County has been advertising, and, and the people with delinquent property taxes have to pay a penalty, or pay the advertising cost. For the board's consideration, maybe the next board meeting to consider, oh, again, the minimum required by law, to, to save taxpayers some money, and-
Absolutely.
I've done this before. It's, uh, it needs to be done, if you, if you didn't do it today, you can do it in two weeks, before the last day of March, before property taxes are delinquent. Don't know what to do, we'll have to run the numbers, see what the difference would be, but, um, possibility you could save those taxpayers that are delinquent on taxes, uh, some, some additional monies.
Haven't we done this before, Mr. Butler?
Not, not this. Not this.
Uh, this, this actually, I read a little bit on this, this actually saved the taxpayers in, in Bay County about a hundred and fifty thousand. It'll be a little, little bit less here, obviously, in, in Gulf County, depending on the number of delinquents, but it gives that taxpayer, taxpayers obviously having, is struggling paying their taxes in the first place. So, this, this would, would cut down on the amount that they'd have to pay, so-